Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, have you another presentation for the board?
I have. President Baker, members of the board. We're going to defer again to our Chief Academic Officer, Daryl Sanders, to introduce the presenters for the Senior Capstone recommendation to the Board of Education.
President Baker, Vice President Stewart, members of the board, Madam Treasurer, Madam Internal Auditor, and Superintendent Good. Our second presentation tonight is our Senior Capstone presentation, Proposal to Amend Board Policy on Our CCS Senior Capstone. This presentation will be led by Alicia Gillison, our Executive Director of Middle and High School, and her team.
Good evening, President Baker, Vice President Stewart, members of the board, Madam Internal Auditor, Madam Treasurer, and Dr. Good. Thank you for this opportunity. The purpose of this presentation is to recommend and request that the Senior Capstone course continue to be offered as an elective as opposed to being a graduation requirement. Prior to the beginning of 2013-14 school year, the Board of Education responded to the concerns of stakeholders referencing the Senior Capstone graduation requirement. The concerned included parents, students, counselors, teachers, administrators, and executive directors. The board answered the concerns and amended Board Policy 5181.1. This amendment authorized the district to pilot the Senior Capstone as an elective for the 2013-14 school year. Some of the parent concerns, there was a theme. The graduation requirement of Senior Capstone would require many students to forego opportunities such as post-secondary enrollment options, Career Center, and eligibility of earning a Diploma of Distinction or Certificate of Specialization, which requires five credits in an academic or an elective area. Parents also shared Senior Capstone as a graduation requirement would create barriers for some students to grow and remain on the college-bound track. Currently, we have juniors at the Career Center as well as juniors who want to explore post-secondary enrollment options but can't because of the limitations Senior Capstone would impose on their schedules. A coordinator for exceptional children shared this concern. While it is important that each of our students have complete access and support across the curriculum, there are unique circumstances where our students with disabilities are unable to complete their individualized education plan transition programs in addition to completing the Senior Capstone requirement. The transitional opportunities are aligned with the section of their IEP, Section Four of the IEP, which focus on independent living skills, employment skills, and post-secondary education. There were also student concerns. Students were concerned that options would be limited as a result of the additional graduation requirement of Senior Capstone. By the junior year, most students have taken at least two foreign language courses and two fine arts classes. As they ascend to their senior year, they want to be flexible. For example, take advantage of seniors-to-sophomore opportunities, post-secondary enrollment options, advanced placement courses, meaningful internships, attend the Career Center for a specialized program, take a fifth course in one or two of the particular areas to earn a Certificate of Specialization. While some students would like the option to take the Career, the Senior Capstone, they too, just as many parents feel it should be an option and not a graduation requirement. This particular policy, and that is Policy 5181.1, includes the exit graduation requirements of Columbus City Schools. The purpose of this amendment, to suspend the graduation requirement of Senior Capstone and to pilot it as an elective without reducing the number of credits required for graduation. Amending Board Policy 5181.1, the graduation requirements are as follows. In addition to meeting the graduation requirements for testing required by the state and considering any exemptions authorized by law or State Board of Education rule, the Diploma of Graduation awarded after September 15, 2013, will require 22 credits earned as follows, and they are listed. Please note that the Senior Capstone credit could serve as an additional elective if the student chooses the course. And if a student decides not to take the course and selects another elective or specialty area, he or she will still be able to graduate if all other requirements are met. Their certificate, the Certificate of College Preparation awarded after September 15, 2013, requires 22 credits earned as follows. And in addition, in all of the graduation certifications, the diploma types Senior Capstone can count as the additional elective if students so choose that particular elective, once again, without penalty of graduation or of not graduating. And then we have our Diploma of Distinction. As you can see, the same applies for the Diploma of Distinction. The Diploma of Distinction awarded after September 15, 2013, requires 24 credits earned as follows. And we have our Certificate of Specialization. And this certificate requires a minimum of 22 credits, including, including the following, with five or more credits in a specific area of study, and that area can be academic or elective coursework.
During this past year, we piloted the Senior Capstone in several schools. There are currently 293 seniors taking Senior Capstone, with the exception of those students taking it at Columbus International. Please keep in mind, since its inception, the Capstone experience at Columbus International has been embedded in the curriculum for those students who want to earn an international diploma, majoring in French, Spanish, or Chinese, and minoring in another language, accumulating a total of seven world language credits by graduation. The Senior Capstone is a great opportunity for our students to showcase their work. But under the circumstances, allocation cuts, eliminating student choice, not enough teacher preparation, issues surrounding special education implementation, there is real concern about the graduation requirement, not only from parents and students, but also administrators. Currently serve as the principal of Northland High School and had the opportunity to survey my colleagues in their opinions of the Senior Capstone class. While every high school administrator I surveyed sees the benefit of offering a course like Capstone, those same administrators do not feel it is in the best interest of our students to require the course for graduation. Many of the concerns you've heard from parents and students already are the same concerns of the administrators. We are concerned greatly about the constraints requiring the Capstone course with put on students interested in post-secondary enrollment option courses, multiple advanced placement courses, Career Center students, and students with disabilities. High school administrators are also concerned about staffing impact in our buildings. Capstone would require between .8 and 1.2 FTEs, full-time equivalent teachers in each building, not counting the needs of students with disabilities. Without additional staffing, reassigning teachers to these courses would take away from other course offerings. In most cases, the best teachers for these Capstone classes are also the best teachers for the college prep rigor we are attempting in our core subjects. Therefore, most schools would have to use elective teachers to teach the course. It is not that they are not qualified teachers, but their expertise is not in a course such as Capstone. The overwhelming response from high school administrators is that we do not want to have, was that we do not want to have the right teachers, excuse me, we want to have the right teachers available for this course if we were to offer it. And with our current staffing, we don't feel that we are in that position to offer the right teachers for the Capstone course. Each high school felt they could offer it as an elective without a tremendous impact to their existing course offerings and still have the right teachers. The Capstone course would be, also be a strain on our facilities, as the Capstone courses will most likely require the use of a computer lab for the full-time classroom. This will limit the opportunities for other classrooms to access the computer labs. High school administrators also have concerns as to how we accommodate the new 12th grade students that routinely enter our buildings during the school year from other districts around the state of Ohio and central Ohio. The high school administrators understand the thoughts behind the Capstone project, and we agree it is a good option for some students, but not all. We want to create an experience for all students, teachers, administrators, district personnel that the families can be proud of. Without an additional trained allocation to support the Senior Capstone, I give you a scenario of what would happen in a, in a high school with lack of choices. Scenario one, a senior class of 150 would require approximately five additional sections to accommodate the 30 students per class limitations. That would mean taking five classes away from other course offerings. The scenario two, senior, 60 students were interested in taking the Senior Capstone as an elective, it would require only two sections. The high schools are willing and think it would be best to be able to offer it as two sections versus requiring five sections. The second scenario would provide high schools with options of offering additional courses such as writing speech, psychology, and sociology, and other fine arts courses, and foreign language courses. This will lend itself to the right teachers teaching the right courses. Most importantly, offering Senior Capstone as an elective would provide our students with the power of choice.
How can we recognize those students that have elected to take the pilot course? When they started their scheduling, it looked like it was going to be a graduation requirement. Well, there are 17 students who completed the Senior Capstone last summer, and 293 seniors currently enrolled in the course, once again, with the exception of Columbus International. Seniors who successfully complete the pilot course could be recognized by a Capstone cohort or a Capstone stole for graduation. How will we communicate this? Based on the Board of Education's recommendation, principals, counselors, principals and counselors would share this information during grade-level parent meetings, orientations, and town meetings. This information would also be reflected on the graduation planner. President Baker, Board Member Hudson, Board Member Cole, Board Member Gibbs, Vice President Stewart, Board Member Reyes, Board Member Peretti, Madam Internal Auditor, Madam Treasurer, and Dr. Good. After reviewing all concerns, the recommendation before the Board of Education is to approve the Senior Capstone as an elective beginning with the cohort of 2015. This will provide principals the autonomy to work with their site-based councils to make the site-based decision to offer the course as an elective based on student need, interests, and available resources. Students and their parents have the option to select this elective if they desire, or continue with their post-secondary enrollment, Career Center, or advanced placement options, as well as select any other offered electives. It provides choice and education, and that's a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from board members? Ms. Reyes.
Thank you, President Baker, and thank you for the presentation. Have a couple of questions, only because I have seen the impact and the results of the Capstone in the international high school. I've been to several presentations and I've talked to several students about what they've learned and the skills that they, they've acquired in having exposure to knowing what a proposal is, doing research, and actually being able to present a project, which I believe these are skills that a good majority of our students are going or may need. How do we ensure that these skills that they need are being learned by those that have chosen that curriculum? Because I believe if I'm a student and you give me the choice, I'm going to convince my parent to say no to that. Because what student, not many students are going to say, "I want to go do research, and I want to do this huge paper, and I want to sit in front of the class, and I want to do this." But I, I believe there may be some students where this is going to be beneficial, because when they get to college, when they get to the workforce, when you're looking at continuous improvement, when you're looking at how our industries are moving, some industries, not all industries, are moving, these are going to be some of the skill sets they're going to need. So how do we ensure that our students are well-prepared if they do choose to go to that particular industry or a particular school that requires this skill set?
Thank you for that question, President Baker, Board Member Reyes. Some of the same skills that are embedded in the Senior Capstone project are the same skills that our young people should be getting in their English courses. When you talk about research papers and term papers and learning how to be an effective communicator, these are some of the same skills our young people should be learning. We don't want to water down the rigor, but we want to ensure that for those students that want to continue those options, say, seniors to sophomores, and they don't have that time on the schedule, we don't want to limit what they do as they go out and continue their post-secondary options. We have some students that want to really focus on their Certificate of Specialization, but would not be able to if it was determined that this was a graduation credit. So we want to be able to apply that flexibility to the scheduling, and out in the high schools and with our teachers, we have to ensure that our students are still getting those skills, doing research papers at an early age. It has been my experience as an administrator in Columbus City Schools, our young people, they may do a research paper their freshman year, one their sophomore year. Well, we need to increase those so that that is second nature, so that APA or MLA formats in writing is nothing new when our young people get to college.
So, so my question wasn't whether we should have the Capstone as elective or not. So I just wanted, thank you for kind of responding. That, I'm still a little perplexed, and I know why you're saying, "We should, they should."
You want to know how we'll.
I think it's important for many students, I'm not saying all, because not, not every student's going to go somewhere where they're going to be required to do that type of project work. But when we're, when we're talking should, may, one of the, one of my concerns would be that when you start saying, "I don't have the capacity," when we start saying, I shouldn't say you, because we're together here, when we start saying, "I don't have the capacity, I don't, we don't have the, the teacher, we don't have the, the specialty, we don't have the desire." I want to possibly hear, have you looked at, do we streamline a process where those students that should have this skill would be good to have this skill, so that when they get to college, or they get to that first job and they're being required, they don't get fired and/or no longer feel frustrated in, in college? Because this is what I don't want, want to get to. We hear a high school saying, "I would have loved to had, have 30 students go to Capstone. That was the interest, and because we didn't have the resources, we didn't do it, and because it's an elective, it wasn't pushed as far." So I, what I'd like to hear, maybe not today necessarily, is have you thought about, how do you streamline those students that would benefit for it, so that we can allocate the resources necessary, so that those that need it, desire it, and should have it, will have it?
Thank you. I was noting your question, and you are absolutely correct. And I don't want it to be the perception that, that our high school principals do not want to offer the course. They find great value in the course. But when you talk about the course being a graduation requirement other than elective, now, how can we make this elective appealing? Because our students need this, and that would go back to a graduation stole or a cohort at graduation, something that sets them apart. And I just want to talk about for a moment, a lot of times, graduation, it's more for the parents, the ceremony is more for the parents and the family members. And I believe that parents would encourage their young people if they are not on that track. Wouldn't you like a stole? Wouldn't you like something that would set you apart? Let's go ahead and take this course. It will be of benefit to you as you go on to college. But I do believe that it should be an option. I did note your point about streamlining the process, how we make sure that we have those resources.
I do have a follow-up, but I will yield to my colleagues.
Ms. Hudson, I believe you were next.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would echo Board Member Reyes's point. I'm just wondering, why take it out of Diploma of Distinction? For, for the reasons that Board Member Reyes, I, I think probably the best advice I ever got when I was in high school, because I, in getting ready to go to college, was always take something where you have to write. And I did that, and I, and I forced myself to do it. We didn't, I didn't have this kind of an opportunity, but I had other opportunities, I think, other opportunities for independent study. I mean, it's, or, you know, being creative in terms of, is what I understand the Capstone program allows, is, is important, plus that, that research and writing piece, that the foundation advice that I received carried through for me till, through law school. And, but I wonder why maybe not leaving it in the Diploma of Distinction or changing that, so it has, it's not just about the stole or the court, but, but also that it, it is set apart, but it's still, I think, would still achieve the goals of not being overly burdensome. And, and I think a lot of that logic does make, make sense for the other degrees.
President Baker, Board Member Hudson, I think that is an excellent idea.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent idea, and it still lends itself to the Diploma of Distinction and setting, setting apart.
Ms. Gibbs?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Gillison, for that presentation. I just have a few questions, and then I'll yield, and I'll let you come back to me. So the 293 students that are involved, are they going to, how are we going to hold them harmless? Or, or what do we do with them now? They are, are they on track to, to successfully complete it, the Capstone now?
President Baker, Board Member Gibbs, yes. If they're, if you're asking, are they on track to successfully complete the Capstone? How are we holding them harmless? There were two, two different things that I heard. The one way that right now we're holding them harmless is because it is a pilot as an elective, and it is not a graduation requirement. So in the event that they are not successful, it will not impede them graduating.
Okay. Has a follow-up to Board Member Hudson's question. Interesting you offer that. My question is this, so right now, at the building level, and correct me at any point that I'm wrong, you get a certain allocation of staff, right? Buildings get to pick what they need, right? How do we ensure that, how do we ensure equity of access to students throughout the district of the Capstone program? So, we could offer it as a part of the Diploma of Distinction, but if I go to a school that doesn't have Capstone teachers, that, how do, I mean, how would that student access the Capstone program if that building, because we're going to site-based management, and they say, "Oh, I would love to have a teacher that can teach this, but I need more English, I need more science, or I need this." How are we going to ensure the equity of access in this district that is so geographically spread out, that someone in the south end, a student in the south end, can go to a building that has Capstone, someone in the west side, someone on the north side, someone on the east side, so that everyone doesn't have to go to one school that offers Capstone?
President Baker and Board Member Gibbs, that's an excellent question. In our district, we, we have an opportunity, and our building principals have the opportunity to go through an allocation or to request an additional allocation in with special factors. And as we look at, as we're walking through our, growing through our site-based decision-making and our site-based councils, looking at student needs, and if there is a student need in the school, and looking at the resources, so for instance, if you did not have the resources, there is the avenue to request an allocation based on the special factors. And the special factors is, my student population, my parents, my community members are concerned and would like to have the Capstone offered here at our school.
I'm going to offer just a few recommendations or ideas, and to ask about the ideas. Based on our previous presentation and this one here, we're going to have to look at how we offer advanced courses. A lot of our summer school offerings are for remedial work. But if you wanted to take full advantage of all the great things that Columbus City has to offer, there has to be more opportunities to take advanced work. So if I could take some more elective in summer school, maybe I can fit in Capstone plus senior to sophomore. Because our students, they have a lot of initiative if we provide more opportunities to, to not just repeat classes that you failed, but to get ahead. I would also say, if this becomes, if we take this away as a requirement, and now you can get more electives, have we looked at what electives we're actually offering? Are we offering the most current, relevant, up-to-date electives that are going to help them when they go into the business world? So, when have we, did you, have we done a review of Capstone going away, therefore the new electives or the electives offered are A, B, C?
President Baker and Board Member Shawna Gibbs, I was not too, I was not prepared to address that, but that is something that we will definitely take into account. As Mr. Donahue had mentioned, when you look at what the teachers are offering, and we could, if it was not a graduation requirement, then there is room for additional elective offerings. And what we are currently finding is that our students are electing to take the fourth year, fifth year of a foreign language, and maybe a social studies. So those type of things we are looking at, and this is an awesome opportunity, as you mentioned, summer school, because we're in the midst of summer school planning. So that's something that I will also take back with, with our summer school planning team.
I would offer, in terms of looking at our electives and what, to Ms. Reyes's point, skills and, and things that students are going to need in the workplace, that our electives need to have rigor, but that all of our students in the district need to have access to quality electives. And what we don't want to happen is that only, I mean, certain buildings are going to offer certain electives, but we want there to be great choices throughout the district in terms of both at lottery schools and at traditional high school, non-lottery high, middle, middle and high schools, because you're talking about eighth graders can, that can now start taking courses toward these paths. But I would look at making sure those electives are fresh, they are up to date, they are going to translate into the workforce skills or reinforce the academic skills, and maybe look at Capstone, if not just at the building level, can it be offered at downtown high school when students come, I mean, if you don't have it in your building, people can come to a downtown high school to be a part of a Capstone cohort that may not be in individual buildings. I just encourage you to look at innovative ways to deliver it without diminishing the initial rigor. We, I applaud you for looking at this and saying, "Ah, it doesn't work." Far too often, we keep doing things that don't work. So I'm glad we're kind of stopping right now. But I think the initial, we were sold on the idea because it's an awesome program when implemented well, and it's well-supported with the right resources and the right environment, and introduced at the right time. So I would like that to be offered. I would just offer to you to look at how everyone in the district can access it, and look at traditional and non-traditional ways, that if it's only three students over here, but 15 students over there, that no one's going to change an entire allocation for three students, but that maybe they can, you know, maybe it comes a lottery program, who knows? I would just say, look at, to look at.
Thank you, Dr. Baker, and Board Member Gibbs. Credit flex is also an opportunity that our students would have. But I tell you, I will take up the challenge and look at innovative ways that we can continue to increase the rigor in Columbus City Schools, not only through Senior Capstone offerings, but also through our elective offerings. And as I mentioned before, Danny Graves, who is leading our summer school planning, we will be meeting again this week, and we will also talk about the course offerings for summer school.
Awesome. Mr. Superintendent, did you have a comment?
No, I was going to echo President Baker, to Ms. Gibbs's point, I was going to echo that, you know, that it's one of the things we really need to celebrate as a district, is the parents do have choice, families do have choice where they attend, and each of our buildings do have a brand, they do have a uniqueness, and they offer different things at each of those buildings. But it shouldn't preclude students traveling to take advantage of those programs that may exist in a building where they're not currently enrolled. The Credit Flex option is something that is growing in districts where students can actually work with an assigned faculty member and their family to define how they will fulfill those objectives. So you could do a Capstone project without actually enrolling in a Capstone class, provided you had a Capstone faculty of record. And to Ms. Gibbs's point, it's, you know, it's great foreshadowing because the secondary, secondary education industry is changing considerably. We will see far more courses that are courses like Project Lead the Way and Pathways to Prosperity that are career-oriented, where the content, your English content or your mathematics content or social studies or science content is actually delivered in the context of a career versus in a textbook sort of static presentation. And it's very exciting because that does tickle the interest of our students, and it'll begin as early as middle school and follow them through not only high school, but even into their associate degree programs. And so when we hear about those career pathways, that's exactly what we're talking about. A lot of people in our community will confuse that as going back to the days of wood shop and home economics. That's not what this is about necessarily. This is about applying your new knowledge in very relevant, very rigorous ways that will lead to earning potential or securing credentials toward careers after high school. And that resonates, based upon our interactions this fall, you remember with hundreds of community groups, that resonates with our communities' families, that they see those career opportunities as a result of beginning in middle school to engage in those pathways. So great foreshadowing, couldn't have been a better commercial if I paid you to do it, so.
Let's see. Mr. Cole.
Thank you, Dr. Good. Thank you, Ms. Gillison, for this presentation and for broadening the opportunity for other students who otherwise would be held harmful, harmful, if you will, to having to meet this Capstone requirement, may not do that because they were just disinterested, because maybe they aren't, they don't have a particular interest or focus in that area. What I would argue, though, is this, to the argument that was made by my colleagues relative to appeal, to relevance, and what you just argued, applied opportunity, is thinking about where community partnerships fall in alignment with this. I think this is our opportunity as a board, and bringing this conversation back up to the board level, this is where we even play a role in being able to assist those efforts in figuring out how we utilize community partnerships with small business, community partnerships with our corporate community, community partnerships with our building trades or other skilled trades to otherwise make something like this an appeal, particularly in a Capstone even, make it something much more appealing. I would love, I would, I would have loved to have been hooded for the 12th grade. I would have loved that opportunity to have been hooded and have the whole thing. But I think there's also the added appeal of, again, bringing this in direct alignment with the goal that you set forth earlier this year of directing students towards career paths, military opportunity, entrepreneurship, so on and so forth. So thank you, but I would certainly ask that you look at and use us as a resource to help assist you in bringing community partnerships to bear.
Ms. Reyes.
President Baker, actually, Ms. Gibbs actually brought back what I was trying to say by streamlining, to making sure that people have access at all schools if there's a limited number of students. Dr. Gibb, Dr. Gibbs. We're igniting new folks. Dr. Good actually responded to the section. I was concerned that we make sure that our students understand somewhere in their career path or academic career, the importance of possibly having this. I think I've shared with the board before, the district that I went through, there were very distinct career paths. You had the career path, you had the person that may be going to a two-year university, and then there was a career path there. You had the person that was going to a four-year university, a person that was very interested in AP courses. And if I was a person that had, I was a person that was interested in the AP coursework, cap, this program would be something that I'd be interested in. I could see that our gifted and talented parents and students would be interested in this, and we've heard from them about access for all students in all buildings. So I wanted to reiterate that I feel that this is something, again, I'm not arguing the elective or non-elective, but I believe that this, just as important as AP can be, because I'm a person that's recruiting, my HR, my other nine-to-five, eight-to-five, eight-to-ten job is looking at these people that are carrying the white belt, the green belt, the Sig Sigma black belt, the presentation, and we're talking entry-level, fresh out of high school slash college. I know people think that this is only unique to those folks that have been in the work environment for a very long time. We've got recent graduates in my company that are currently working on white belts, green belts, black belts, CI communication project work. So I'm glad that, I would like to make sure that we're somewhere where we're looking at, who has that conversation? Is it the principal, is it the teachers, is it the counselor? As you're going back and looking at those streamlining of diplomas, who's having that conversation? Because to Ms. Hudson's point, my counselor told me not to take the AP class. My counselor told me that I was not able or capable of going to college. And if I would have heard that, I probably wouldn't be here. So I want to make sure that we are having that conversation, even though we, as administrators, think that person can't go there or be there, that that's still offered. Because that's my fear, if you make it an elective, then it's not a conversation piece. Sorry, that was a long, drawn-out request there.
So President Baker, you were on board to Ms. Reyes's point. Not only is it a good idea, it may soon be the law. House Bill 487, which is part of the mid-bioennial review, so the biennial budget is reviewed midway through, they make corrections or amendments to that. And one of the first, one of the primary components of that is to train all employees on career advising, and some of the requirements of that will be that each student has a student's success plan that begins in grade six, and that plan is generated through a meeting with the parents, and also can include assignment of that student to alternative learning environments to ensure they have access to those opportunities you described. So not just a good idea, it may soon be the law, and it definitely echoes what I think people are feeling in this 21st century in terms of what preparedness needs to, what it needs to be or what it means to be prepared to succeed in careers, the military and entrepreneur position, or working for someone else, so. And by the way, we did testify in support, we provided written testimony in support of that.
Ms. Gibbs.
Yes. Just two things quickly, and to thank you. And the Capstone was a great, a great idea, and we followed its implementation. I would like to thank one of our parent advocates, Ms. Mary Pager, who kept this idea in front of us and helped us to review the idea of the program and the ways that it can be successful and the ways and the idea that we should look at it. And she's awesome, she's going to kill me. But she's an awesome parent advocate who really took charge of this. The other part, to Dr. Good's point, though, as you look at the electives and things that we need, people at some point shied away from home ec and wood shop. And now type-two diabetes is out of control because people don't know how to cook, and kids can't fix nothing, and people can't change tires. And so what people look at as what, in terms of what people needed, we kind of ditched a whole lot of that, those type of courses, because we put our eggs in the college prep basket, and those practitioners went and started HGTV, and they're getting paid millions teaching you how to fix a shelf that you could have learned in eighth grade, you know, when we taught those type of skills. And I'm just picking on you because it's an age-old debate, but as we look at skills, to be successful in college and to be a writer, you're going to have to type a paper. Where's our typing courses? Where's keyboarding? Where is the new form of health and nutrition and home ec that teaches you how not to get your leg cut off because you're a type-two diabetic and you're predisposed? Or how to fix things in your house and not pay millions for other people to do it? Those life skills, and if you can find a course to bring back that helps, I've seen it in terms of Quest, and it's taken different courses along the way, but where's, can American Sign Language be an elective? I mean, feel free to be as innovative as you think we could pay for, but even if we can't, those building trades that Mr. Cole talked about, those partnerships, they, our kids live outside a desk and a keyboard. They have to go home and raise families and learn how to not put a scalding hot bottle in a baby's mouth. Those skills still have a place, and I know they have been pushed to the side in our curriculum, but I think in society and the community, you see where we've paid the price for that. So just review those courses. I'm confident you will come back with the best courses ever, but I will be excited. If you offered typing in summer school for the parents who would make their child take it, I would. Or if you offered a home ec or some skills that you know our students, who some are raising themselves, can use to help them have a better life. That's my last piece.
Other questions from board members?
President Baker, it's actually our generation that has failed, and many of us are the ones that had the home ec and have the benefit of the wood shop classes, and it's our children that are suffering from the diabetes. So I'm not certain it's the children's fault or the curriculum's fault. I think it's maybe our priorities have changed. I don't know. It's an interesting, I don't want to claim a cause and effect without really looking further at this and the data, but I do agree, we need to have things that are more relevant for 21st century citizens. I'm not certain home ec and shop are the ones, but I think the new iteration of those, what those may be, may in fact be the career pathways we're talking about, you know, so.
Yoga, zumba.
Any other questions on the presentation or comments from board members? Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent. Does that conclude your report, Mr. Superintendent?
Pardon?
Does that conclude your report?
It does.
Thank you very much.